Good evening, everyone. I am Mayor Shelley Carlson. It is July 14th, 5:30 PM. The Moorhead City Council welcomes public input on issues listed on the agenda of general community interest, time and council permitting. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you would like to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a form provided by the city clerk and we will call you up during the citizens to address a council item on the agenda. You'll need to state your name and if you are a Moorhead resident. If comments were submitted to the clerk prior to the meeting via email or phone, those comments will be entered into the record. For more information on participation, please visit the council meetings page on the City of Moorhead website at mooreheadmn.gov. We, the Moorhead City Council, collectively with gratitude acknowledge the sacred land the City of Moorhead is built upon. We acknowledge the people who have resided here for generations and recognize that the spirit of the Dakota, Djibwe, and Métis and all Indigenous communities permeate this land. That, could I get a roll call, please?
Ryan Nelson.
Nicole Matson.
Here.
Heather Niesmeyer.
Here.
Emily Moore.
Here.
Deb White.
Here.
Lisa Borgen.
Here.
Sebastian McDougal.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Here.
Mayor Shelley Carlson.
Here. And for those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right. And City Manager Molly, do we have any agenda amendments?
May, yes, Mayor. We have one item under New Business, a hearing related to unexpared and grilled liquor license violation.
Okay, that will be added to the agenda. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, Niesmeyer.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And we will move on next to recognitions and presentations. The first, I will turn over to Ms. Lisa Bodie for the Moorheart recognition.
Thank you, Mayor Carlson. Members of the City Council, we're here tonight with a recommendation that you honor Sarah Opitz with the Moorheart Award. Sarah works at the Lotus Center and with recovery-engaged community, and she has undoubtedly impacted countless lives through her unrelenting and selfless efforts. Sarah provides those in recovery with access to life-saving resources and meaningful support. She fosters a welcoming, inclusive, and understanding environment in which those struggles with addiction can find community without stigma or judgment. Her compassion and encouragement speak to her incomparable character and empowers individuals to seek the help that they need. Kim Schofeld wrote in her nomination, "Sarah is an advocate for all. She has a way of gently but successfully leading others to advocate for themselves first, for their peers, community, and including everyone along the way. She has the wind at her back as she continues to push forward for our community and especially for the marginalized and forgotten. There is not a barrier that I have seen," this is Kim's words, "that Sarah has not overcome. I have just barely scratched the surface of Sarah's accomplishments in her personal and professional life. If I had to have someone in my corner, I would definitely want it to be Sarah Opitz with her resilience, her vision, her compassion, her empowerment, and encouragement, along with her inclusiveness." And I had to nudge Sarah just a little bit to get back to me to accept the award because she said she was just a little overwhelmed with the recognition, and I did say that is kind of a characteristic of those that are honored with the Moorheart. They are more about the community than they are themselves. So with that, Mayor Carlson, we present the Moorheart Award.
Good afternoon and good evening. I apologize, my voice is a little raspy. I did a clean time countdown, and apparently usually I'm really loud, so they asked me to do all the screaming and yelling, and I lost my voice. But, thank you. This is incredible. I have a really hard time taking recognition. I think that's part of recovery, understanding. Like, I am an accumulation of so many people and so many ideas, and I just really am grateful to be a part of what the Lotus Center has become, recovery-engaged communities, and solid ground. What became an idea of many that has accumulated into a reality, and we see the positive changes being made in some of the toughest neighborhoods in the Moorhead area. If there's anything I can say about it, it's that this is a miracle and it works. And if you ever need to know how to find the answers to some of these really hard asking questions, or these issues that we see in our community, maybe the most broken actually have the answers that you're looking for. And we show it every day with the miracles of those that come out and have a passion to save the next person. So, I really just appreciate all these people who showed up. I have an amazing team, and I have an amazing support system that I never knew would come from areas all over the city, whether it's my professors to, you know, some of the boards that I come from. So, thank you for letting me be a part. And I'm so proud to be a Moorhead resident.
and I'm just really grateful that you're here. I'm grateful that somebody took the time to recognize the incredible work that you and your staff are doing in the community, and also the fact that you have, like, the coolest hedgehog ever that resides at the Lotus Center and is something that is maybe unique and different than a therapy dog. It's a therapy hedgehog, and, you know, you're paving ways with therapy animals as well. So, thank you. The next is a presentation from First Community Credit Union. I'll turn this over to City Manager Molly.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just say, Sarah, you are proof that we rise by lifting others. I mean, it's so nice to see you and your mom and dad here and everybody that has surrounded this. Great work and community. Thank you. So, I'm here in place of our Recreation Director, Sean Brandenburg, who had a baby, Baby Miles, I believe on Friday, and he said he was going to be here, and so we told him, "You're not going to be here." So, that's how it goes. And so, we're here to kind of recognize and thank First Community Credit Union, who is supporting our cherished ballpark in Moorhead, a historic field, supported any number of amateur ballgames, youth groups, legion, all the way through. However, it's an aging facility, requires quite a bit of work in order for us to continue hosting tournaments and great, great experiences. And so, there was an initiative that started some time ago to work with the community to improve this field, and on June 30th, the last home game of the year, we broke ground at Mattson Field. Construction began July 1st, the next day, with completed renovation expected for the 2026 baseball season. And so, we're here to receive and say thank you for a generous $50,000 award from First Community Credit Union to help with the Mattson Field Grandstand project. This will include naming rights for the Hall of Fame, and we want to extend our heartfelt thanks. Chris Howell, Market President in our community, and Ty, forgot your last, sorry, Jensen? Jensen, yeah, retail manager is here. And so, we're incredibly fortunate to have businesses like FCCU that believe in Moorhead, and we're so grateful for your support, and I invite you if you'd like to make any comments. Thanks for being on the team.
Hi, I'm Chris Howell, Market President for First Community Credit Union. We are a credit union based out of Jamestown, North Dakota, but we have 26 offices in North Dakota and Western Minnesota. We opened our Moorhead branch about a year ago, and with that, we got a call from Slick Miller, who I've known for a very long time, and I was able to connect him with our leadership, and they were willing to, I believe this is the largest donation we've done in the Fargo-Moorhead area. We've been here 12 years, so the $50,000 donation is, I think, by far the largest one we've done, and we are more than excited to provide this money. And on a personal note, I am a parent of a baseball player that played at Mattson for probably four years. He graduated from high school. I was on a board for Moorhead Babe Ruth years ago, so I was really happy to get Mattson looking the way it should look. So, we are more than excited to provide these funds and hopefully great things to come at Mattson Field.
Yes.
Sorry you interrupted. If we could just go back to item number three, we do need a motion and a second to approve the agenda amendment.
Oh, that's right. We didn't do that. I will do that. First, I want to thank First Community Credit Union. I do know that I was at the groundbreaking and the ribbon cutting when you guys moved to Moorhead, and I know that there are a number of Moorhead individuals that work at your bank, and I heard through the grapevine that they were all trying to make sure that they could work in Moorhead where they lived. I hope you guys were able to resolve that inner turmoil. But I just want to really extend our gratitude for the support for this iconic baseball field. Chris, you kind of mentioned it, how many people have so many memories growing up, either playing there themselves or seeing their kids play. We had a young child who talked about how his dad played and how he was now playing on it. I think he's probably going to be the next mayor of Moorhead as soon as he gets to the age that he can be the mayor. Crosby Ingersoll and related to another Ingersoll who was a mayor in the 70s. So, it was pretty cool to see so many generations come out for that Phase One celebration. So, thank you so much. So, thank you, Kat. Moving back to agenda amendments, I have a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment put forth by City Manager Molly.
So moved, Niesmeyer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And thank you, Kat, for pointing that out. Moving on to the approval of the June 23rd, 2025 meeting minutes, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a request to amend it to add the attendance. It's just missing from that one.
To have a, so a motion to approve amended. That's a friendly amendment. Is that okay with the council members? Okay, friendly amendment to adjust the minutes to make that change with that. Do I have a, I had a motion and a second with a friendly amendment. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries as well. All right. Moving on to citizens to address the council. We have a number of individuals. The first is Martha Wheeler. Martha, do you want to come up to the podium? And I know you've been here before, but I'm going to repeat it for the other people who are here to address the council. This is an opportunity for you to come to the podium. You'll need to state your name. If you are a Moorhead resident, then you will have three minutes to speak to the council. This isn't an opportunity where the council is going to ask questions, or there's not going to be a back and forth. This is an opportunity for us to receive the information. If there's information that I maybe can respond to immediately, I will. Otherwise, we will take your information and a staff person will contact you afterwards. So, just want to make sure that the expectation is that it's not going to be a back and forth kind of a conversation. So, and this little lovely contraption from, I think, the 1800s, maybe not, maybe 1950s, we didn't have electricity back then. It'll be green for the full three minutes, and then when it's red, you'll need to wrap up because that means your three minutes is done. So, with that, I will turn it over to you. State your name and if you are a Moorhead resident.
I'm Martha Wheeler, and yes, I am a Moorhead resident, and I'd like to thank the City of Moorhead for supporting our first annual FM Flutter Fest at Gooseberry Mountain Park on June 17th. As it turned out, we had perfect weather, which contributed to the delight of the event, and we were really happy to have several city council members in attendance. I know I saw Nicole, and I, and you were there, Emily and Sebastian, thank you so much for coming. We had 200-plus attendees of all ages, and we had really positive feedback about the activities and the resources provided by local organizations like UFM Extension, 4H FM Food Partners, Clay Soil and Water Conservation District, and the Nature Conservancy. And we are delighted, we were delighted to have the use, to have a waiver for the use fee for the small shelter, so thank you so much for that, from Parks and Rec. We were also grateful to have native plants donated by the UFM Extension Master Gardeners, and we were able to plant the entire designated garden area, about twice as much as we thought we would be able to. And UFM Extension will also be providing educational signage so that park visitors can learn about the vital role of native plants in supporting native wildlife, including pollinators and birds, as well as And Paul Veekner was able to provide us with tools, compost, and mulch to beautify the garden. And then I just recently met Steve French, who was great to come out and visit with me, very supportive of our continued work on the garden. And our team has been able to spend hours on the site to care for the new plants and to improve the garden area and trim shrubs. And we plan to have another event next year, our second annual, and look forward to working with the city to continue nurturing our community's native habitat. We're brainstorming ideas for a bigger and better FM Flutter Fest during Pollinator Week 2026, including ideas for increasing citizen involvement in caring for the environment and even ideas for art. As I move around the city, I notice many public areas planted in turf grass, and I'm curious about future plans that the city may have in transitioning city-owned and maintained land to be lawn or prairie plantings. An example is, I live near Moorhead High School, and I've often thought about the lawn that was installed at the underpass of 20th and 21st Street, where it's very, very steep, and it must be difficult to mow and maintain. And that's, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Martha. And we can have our Public Works Director get back to you in regards to your question regarding future plans, because it's definitely something that we've looked at, and it's part of our Green Step 5 city plans is looking at what we can possibly turn. I just have no idea where we're at with that. Next is Anita Dewis. And Anita, if you want to come to the podium, please. And then we'll need to have you state your name, and if you are a Moorhead resident, and then you will have three minutes to present information to the council.
Okay, my name is Anita Dewis, and I am a Moorhead resident. I live up at Crystal Creek. And my concerns today are about the levee that was put behind our properties up there over the last summer. And there's some pictures here that back in five years ago, they put a pile of dirt at the entrance to our subdivision that was supposed to be black dirt for the top of this levee, which never got used. And I don't know if you can tell, but where the map is there, the two lots that are blue, one is mine and one is my neighbor, that's, we were the closest to the actual work that was being done. And the next picture with the, all the drain pipes, that was actually put in my backyard. I was the only one that got that put in my backyard. As you can tell from the next pictures, they actually put it on the other side of the drain where the old levee had been removed. Then when you get down further to November, where they were all done, the spot that you can see all the water standing is in my backyard or behind my backyard. And I had contacted Houston Engineering, and I also contacted the city as far as having somebody come out and verify the elevations out there because they were definitely not right. The letters there, one of them is my email to Mike, and then I got Mike's response and Tom's response. And the picture in May, you can see more how the water is standing there, and it's no way, shape, or form going to be able to reach the drain. Instead of putting maybe five yards of black dirt there to fill that in, Mike chose to have a ditch dug behind me, so I have a 10-inch-deep clay ditch. When they did that, they scraped all the dirt out of there. And the pictures previously where the trucks and stuff were going, that's where I now have a clay ditch that they're trying to plant grass in. When I asked why they didn't put dirt in there, Tom told me to my face that if they would have put dirt in there, the water would have backed up into my yard, which is completely false. And I have the prints a little bit lower down there that show what the elevation to my yard is. There you can see where they scraped all the little bit of dirt that I did have. Then the next two show the actual elevations to my yard prior to and after. The next one shows the actual level that my yard was supposed, or that drain was supposed to be. All of this is the storm drain that goes from 43rd Avenue up to 49th Avenue. All of them, you can hardly tell that anything was done there until you get to my yard, which, if you go to the last few pictures, are what I have. Now, those pictures are five weeks since they planted that grass. That is not going to grow. It's planted in pure clay. I would like to see that they do something to fix it.
Okay, thank you. And I know, Anita, you and I have been kind of exchanging some emails back and forth, and we appreciate the, I think it was, I think I counted 55 pictures that you had sent us. Just so you know, that they were all sent to, all of those pictures are sent to all of the council in order to, my understanding was, your question was, your request was to regrade and to regrade that section of land, which is owned by the city. It's technically not, it's your land, but behind your property line would cost about $10,000. And the city engineer did authorize increasing the grade of the swale behind from that two to four inches to make sure it drained better and increase the slope from .5 to .7. The area that was graded in late May, it, I mean, that would have been the ideal time to plant, is in May. But we were able, we missed it, and so the contract is going to be held open until the fall, and they're going to monitor to see how the seeding takes place. And if necessary, in the spring, they will reseed it again. So, as far as our city engineering is concerned, this is part of the overall flood diversion project. They're going to monitor how the grass takes. If it doesn't, it will redo it again next year, but they're not going to be doing any other additional adding of dirt or regrading it. So, but we appreciate you sending us this information and along with the pictures as well. So, thank you for that. And then there is one last individual that wanted to speak tonight, and that was Kumar Sharma. And Kumar, if you want to come to the podium, and you'll need to state your name, and if you are a resident of Moorhead, and again, you'll have three minutes. When it turns red, you'll need to wrap it up.
My name is Kumar Sharma, and I am not the citizen of Moorhead, city of Moorhead. So, thanks, Mayor Carlson and Councilmember. My name is Kumar Sharma, and I have my business partner, Mahdi Barbary, here. We are here to request the conditional use permit for our business, which is called FM Auto Sales in Moorhead, for the boulevard parking. We had this permit previously approved to the previous owner. When we took over the building, we automatically assumed that this has been transferred to us, but supposedly it did not get transferred. It's so important for us to have this permit because the parking is very tight. And for the customers, for the employees, it's very hard to park, and we cannot access our garages that way. So, if we can have this permit, we would really like that because of our business and our parking. And we definitely, since we took over, we have made great improvements to the, to the building and our surroundings. And we are here, we are very excited about the growth of city of Moorhead. We are very excited to be part of it, and we have many other businesses in city of Moorhead. If you please, we ask for you to consider the condition use permit for us, and we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And is this in relation to the item that is on the agenda?
That is correct. It's 10B, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that you were speaking in regards to 10B. And with that, we do not have any other citizens who wish to address the council at this time. So, moving on to public hearings, and I will need a motion to open the public hearing to consider actions related to the declaration of a hazardous business at 1407 Fourth Avenue North, to have a motion to open the public hearing.
Wait, most to approve. Second, Misa Meyer.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We're in public hearing. I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Kristi Lyszewski.
Thank you, Mayor. The request before council tonight is to hold a public hearing, and staff is recommending approval of two resolutions regarding a hazardous building at 1407 Fourth Avenue North. There was a garage fire at this property in August of 2024. Letters were sent out regarding the removal or repair of the garage to the property owner following the fire. But according to the Minnesota Department of Health, the owner unfortunately passed away in December of last year. Notice regarding the timelines and this public hearing was also sent to the owner's estates, and the photos of the garage and the report are in your packet. The garage was deemed a total loss as a result of that fire. There have been no communications regarding the repair or removal of the building. Following the hearing tonight, there are two resolutions before you. The first is a resolution declaring that this fire-damaged structure be considered a hazardous building under Minnesota Statute 463 and ordering the repair or removal of the building. The second is to authorize the agreements necessary to do abatement and demolition of the hazardous conditions, the garage. If the resolutions are passed tonight, we'll do the required notices in the extra. Following those published notices, we would then request a court order to remove the hazardous structures. If the court does approve that authorization, the demolition costs would be then assessed to the property and available to answer any questions.
All right, we are in public hearing right now. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this agenda item? Again, are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this agenda item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion of this item.
So moved, Misa Meyer. Wait seconds.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We're out of public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council for Ms. Lyszewski? And if there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve 9B and C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Lyszewski. Moving on to 10B, and this item, I will turn it over to Robin Houston.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. This item is a resolution to deny use of a city boulevard for a private business. Earlier this year, FM Auto Sales at 1702 Main Avenue was parking vehicles for sale on the boulevard. This business was notified of the violation and did remove those vehicles immediately. We have a 1967 code on the books that would allow this request if approved by the council. The last approval that was requested in, was in 2013 by a different business. There have been several businesses in this location since that, since that time. However, the 1967 code that's in the, it's in the streets code that has a separate boulevard section, it contradicts several other code sections that were approved after that time. We did offer FM Sales the ability to make the request if they could demonstrate the need for more parking, and they needed to provide us a site plan showing how many cars they could fit on their existing site, but they did not provide that to us. It appears just by eyeballing it, I did a measurement, they can do about 25 to 30 cars and still be able to keep clearances of their two overhead doors. Staff is recommending denial of the request based on the 1967 Boulevard section contradicts other zoning and parking requirements for car lots. Parking on a grass boulevard area lessens snow storage area for city maintenance vehicles. It also increases the possibility of damage to those vehicles sitting on the boulevard from road maintenance equipment. It poses concern for utility equipment clearance because there is a utility box in that corner. And it also reduces the aesthetic, the boulevard aesthetic, and adds a negative impact to the trees and the grass due to the weight of the vehicles and also sometimes used vehicles leak fluids from the, from their engine area. Also, staff will be recommending in the future a text amendment to remove that code from the books because we do already have a right-of-way encroachment permit in a different ordinance that is essentially the same process, but it's, it's an administrative process that doesn't come to council, and it has multiple requirements like insurance, the things that cover the city's liability for using the boulevard. Lastly, if you would entertain this request, I do have an alternate resolution with some different conditions, recommended conditions for you to consider. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Robin. Any questions from council? Councilmember White.
Thanks. Well, I had one question, but now you've got my interest peaked, so do you want to tell us what the alternate resolution would be?
Well, so we did create an alternate resolution, and it would basically allow some vehicles, not what they have been parking. It would probably allow about five vehicles because one of the conditions would be, they would have to park behind the trees and not between the trees because that can cause damage to the trees. It also would have to clear that utility box. There's also parking lot lights and street lights, so they would have to clear those. It also would require that they get a right-of-way encroachment permit, which would go back to those, there's a fee required, there's insurance requirements for city liability. So, those are kind of the basics of the conditions, and they're very similar to the conditions that we put on that 2013 business where we did allow it. And it just, you know, it says things like, "Can't park on the sidewalk, we retain the right, you have to move the vehicles at any time we request," those types of things. We just think because of, you know, we don't have someone going through the codes, and I actually didn't know this code existed because in the, in the used car business, you used to have to get a provisional use permit, and it says you can only park vehicles on pavement. Well, I didn't know about this code where it says you could park them on the boulevard if you got council approval. So, it is a contradiction to, that code has been in, I think, the books since 2004. So, and we have some other codes. I think I left it in your, in your report, other contradictory codes in the street, in the street section, and then also some of the other zoning codes for just parking in general.
Well, I'll just say that was, I always am so impressed by our city staff, and I think, I wasn't aware of your psychic abilities too, because that was kind of my question is just, I was wondering if there was some area of flexibility looking at it, because I, you know, I think one is we need to have access to our utilities, and the other issues you raised are, you know, in terms of pollution and things like that, but they can't just use the whole area. So, I was trying to see if there might be some areas where we could have some flexibility, and it sounds like maybe that's a possibility. It does concern me, though, that the business owners didn't respond and provide the requested site plan. But, you know, my, if we could do things to try to help them to have some opportunities to expand, I would be in favor of that. So, I'll open it, you know, I want to hear what other council members think, but that would probably be my preference is if we could allow some, you know, maybe go with your alternative with the addition that they need to also work on that, providing that site plan.
Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Matson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Robin, you said right-of-way encroachment permit? Did I get that correct?
Yes.
If we vote to deny this boulevard parking request, can they still apply for the right-of-way encroachment permit after this?
Technically, I think they could, but it's an administrative permit, and we would probably deny it based on whatever, if you denied it, we would just base our staff denial on, because again, they're not proving the need. They haven't, unless they can prove, prove a need for it, then, you know, we would have to take a look at it. But usually, the right-of-way encroachment permits are not for uses like this. It's uses for businesses that don't have area, and they need to put their sign in the right-of-way. We've approved those. We've also approved, you know, right-of-way encroachments for displaying furniture on sidewalks, that type of thing, and then it covers our liability. We've approved those. We've also approved, you know, right-of-way encroachments for displaying furniture on sidewalks, that type of thing, and then it covers our liability. I guess they probably, they could request it, but we as a staff recommend denial of the use of the boulevard for this type of use. We just, we don't like it. It is very contradictory to several other codes that we have on the book. And we, you know, we want to be consistent with our used car lots because we do have a lot of problems with code enforcement, so if we could be consistent, like everybody has to park on the concrete, well, if somebody drives by that particular business, they're like, oh, they're parking on the grass, I can park on the grass, and then it kind of leads down a road like, well, they can park on the grass, so I can park on the grass. But we could, you know, that process would be open to them, but it would probably be the same result because it's an administrative permit versus a going to planning commissioner council.
Councilmember Nisa Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Robin, to follow up on what you had just stated, the business owners would have had to submit that plan that showed the need or an alternate layout to be able to meet the request, correct?
We were asking for them to demonstrate need so that we could bring that to the council that, hey, they're showing that they can only fit 20 cars on the lot, and they would really like to fit 30 cars on the lot. We never got that information from them, so we just deemed that they did not meet the... They did not demonstrate the need. And like I said, I looked at it from a planning perspective, based on how much room you need to park a car, and I just, you know, eyeballed it. I think they can fit more cars than they have ever had on there before, and they've also never shown us, like, let me see you park 20 to 30 cars on here, and, you know, how tight is it? So that's something that they could probably, you know, if you wanted to entertain that, they could still do that.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that that plan not being there is not having the need or showing the need.
It's not showing the need.
And that's why the staff recommendation is to decline. Thank you.
Councilmember Borgan.
Thank you. I just kind of want a few more facts. So when did FM Auto Sales, which was Mr. Sharma, when did they purchase this?
Oh, let's see. They got their, they get a temporary license with zoning approval. I think that was last year, last year? Two years? Two years, two years ago.
So did the city then send them notice that they were in violation by parking on the boulevard, or how did we get to where we are today?
So normally, we're not proactive with code enforcement, but if somebody's driving around and sees something, or if we get a complaint, so somebody noticed that they were parking on the boulevard this year. So, but as this picture is actually from last year, so it was not brought up last year, so they have been parking on the boulevard probably since they started. The business, if we, you know, we went through the aerials, and some businesses use the boulevard for parking even though they weren't supposed to, some did not. There's a couple photos in your report that show that people would park on that property. It used to be, it was built as an auto body or an auto repair shop, and through the years, it's been auto repair or car. In 2013, the city did, the city council did approve a permit for parking on the boulevard, but it was conditioned to that owner only, so I would assume it was not communicated to the next owner that you can't do that.
Right, okay.
And that could have been why they continue to do it.
I just wanted to kind of clarify that. So they've been there for a couple years. We've had a complaint. It opened the door to, hey, you know, this was never approved for your business because this permit didn't go with the sale of the business, so this is a violation. I guess my question also is, if we were to consider the alternative thing that you're talking about, could they put cement where they would be parking rather than continuing to park in the grass?
We do not allow paving of our boulevards unless special circumstances, and I don't think this would meet those. There's utilities in that boulevard, so we would not want pavement over the, over those areas. And just for your information, the only place that, based on the conditions that I wrote up, that they could park, one of the conditions is they have to park behind the trees, between the trees and the existing pavement, so it would really be at that corner of First Avenue and Main Avenue, so that I think they could park, like, you know, four to five cars there and still keep the utility box clear. But we would not want to see them going further and parking between the trees because those trees and the grass, they're already damaged, so we would like to get some time to get that healthy and make it look better. But they would, again, they would get five, four to five more vehicles, but they can fit eyeballing it 25 to 30 vehicles on that site, and how many? I don't know. I think their plan was 30, up to 30 vehicles.
Other questions or comments by council members? Councilmember Hendrickson.
On mute here. So if we were to, you know, take up this alternative ordinance resolution, would that have to go through the council, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I could hand it to you. I have copies here, so if you're going to entertain, not entertain the denial, but want to approve it instead, then that we have alternate conditions subject to that approval?
Yeah, I agree with you, and boulevard, I mean, those are, you know, there's damage to it, and cars drive up on it, and I think it is a good compromise for five cars at that spot. I think that'd be a good spot for them, so, yeah, I'm open to the alternative resolution.
I'll be calling on Councilmember White, but first, I do have a question. In this boulevard, this is city-owned land, correct?
Correct.
So whose responsibility of it, when the damage is done to the trees, the damage is done to the grass, whose responsibility of it is, I mean, is this laid out in this alternative resolution that the owner then will be responsible for ensuring that if that tree dies, that it gets replaced, and the cost is having to be replaced by that auto owner? Or how does that work?
So we could, so in this resolution, which would be a council approval, there is a condition that they still have to go through the right-of-way encroachment permit, so we could put some language in that permit or in here also, that if you create any damage to the trees or the trees have to be replaced, they have to be replaced at your cost. Same with the grass. If we were going to limit the area to the corner, we could put in a condition that you must reseed that area that's been muddy and rutted, like between the trees. We could add it here, but we could also work with them in the right-of-way encroachment permit.
Right, because I just don't think that the rest of the city should bear the costs of a business who is using our boulevard, our shared boulevard, to, like, we shouldn't be bearing the cost if they're the ones doing the damage. So I guess I would maybe make that suggestion to council if that is the route that you decide to do, that that gets added, so that's not additional cost and expenditure from our Public Works Department. So, Councilmember White.
I just wanted to go back to, again, the issue of the requested site plan, and so, you know, I feel like right now, I really appreciate all the work that you're trying to do to make this work, and again, I think we really want to support our local businesses, but we don't have the information to demonstrate the need yet, and so I wouldn't be comfortable even acting on anything tonight without that. So I wonder if there's a, could we perhaps table this and, you know, give you some time? And if the owners were willing to follow through with that, and also, again, maybe talk about some other compromise things where they would take on responsibility for any damage, you know, and maybe have a few more spots so they could expand, but I just, until we have that information to even demonstrate that this is warranted, I wouldn't feel comfortable acting.
We can certainly do that, but we have been requesting that information for many months. This, I think, started in February. I think the code enforcement notice was in February, so we've been asking for the site plan since we've been speaking to them.
Could we just, could we ask the owners tonight why they haven't followed through with that?
I think, let's just leave the motion on the table. You know, this is something that our staff can, you know, demonstrate. I don't think we need to do the Q and A back and forth, so any other council members have any questions or comments? Councilmember Borgan.
You know, I'm not, I have nothing against this business, but I think we have a code about not parking on the boulevard, and I believe that if we start making exceptions, and we're going to have other people wanting exceptions, and I am concerned about the aesthetics, I'm concerned about the trees, I'm concerned about the grass, I'm concerned about the utilities, and there hasn't been a showing of business need, and they were given an opportunity to do that, and they didn't, so I would suggest that we go forward today with denying the request.
Is that a motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
A second.
A motion and a second. Discussion, Councilmember White.
Yeah, you know, typically, we always have an opportunity to have questions and responses from the business owners, so I would like to have the business owners have the opportunity to just explain as they're here in the audience to perhaps address why they haven't followed through on responding to the request.
Well, I appreciate that, Councilmember White. I did make a statement that the owner had already had the opportunity, but in order to appease you, sir, if you would come up and only answer that question specifically, why you have not since February submitted this information, please do not go on with any other additional answers besides that one question. Thank you.
Thank you. I think all the information they need, we had been requested to them. I'm not sure what information she's asking for, and about those damaging tree and stuff, I don't see any damages in the lot. We've been taking care of the grass all this year. I've been in that location for over 15 years, worked for Sam Adams as well. Now we've taken over, we're only asking for a little help.
Okay, so, sir, you haven't really answered the question. The question was, there was a request made for you to give documentation that showed the amount of cars that you would need and demonstrate the need, and you did not provide that to our Planning Department. Can you please explain to the council why you did not provide that?
As far as I know, we did reply everything they need. I don't know what's exactly missing they were looking for. We did email it to them, what we asking for and what they looking for. I'm not sure what's missing in there.
Okay, thank you, sir. You can sit down.
My pleasure, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Mattson.
I am totally neutral on the question. Is there any harm in waiting till the next council meeting to make a decision on this?
We already have a motion and a second on the table.
That, okay.
Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm just asking, Robin, is there any harm, anything that would change in terms of, is there like a 30-day clock or something that they would automatically be approved if we didn't wait or something along those lines?
There is no clock, but like I said, we've been working on this since February, and we deal with a lot of used car lots that have similar problems, so I would just say I would prefer you approve it or deny it, just so we can move on to the next project.
Councilmember Hendrickson.
Could we, well, deny it tonight, and then you could work with them? I mean, you've tried to work with them over the last four or five months, but, I mean, if they're willing to work with you, then maybe we can look at this resolution again, but I think, I think we're, I think it's right to deny it tonight because they haven't provided the business plan or anything like that, so I agree with Councilmember White. So, that's what I, you know, deny it tonight, and they can come back, because there's no window. I mean, there's no...
No, there's no window. They can come back if they wish to.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember White.
Thanks, just, I want to make sure I'm absolutely clear. So if we were to vote no tonight, they could submit the same request?
They can until I repeal that ordinance.
Okay.
And then after the ordinance is repealed, it would just be a right-of-way encroachment permit, and that's an administrative approval, but we can wait, you know, if they're going to submit to council for a request where you would have to approve the vote, you know, we can obviously wait on that text amendment, but it would just be the same thing, and we have emails proving that we've requested this information and it was never provided, so, and it was in an email also verbally requested on the phone.
Right, and I trust you, again, I know the amount of work, I just, if there's ambiguity, misunderstanding, I would rather if it means just putting things off for one month just to see if we can get some clarification, but again, like, and if we still have the same situation, and it doesn't seem warranted to have it, I support staff, but my preference would be to just wait for one month in order to try to clarify some of this.
But I think if they already have a chance to come back and reapply for it, it's not going to change anything. Why wait, especially if it's already been motion made and a second? It's just a matter of semantics at that point, if they can just reapply later.
Well, wouldn't there be extra staff work too if they're, basically, if they're, then you're denying, and then they have to go through all the paperwork again, rather than us just putting a hold on it for one month? To me, it seemed, you know, if we're doing the same result but having to put extra work into it by having them go through the whole application process again, wouldn't it be easier to just delay by one month?
So we have a motion and a second, so let's, you know, we're...
Let's call the question.
Okay, the question's been called, so motion and a second, we need to, the question's been called already.
Yes, my hand was raised, and my...
I didn't see it, the question's been called. Can you take a roll call, please?
Can I have the, first of all, could we discuss parliamentary procedure? She did have her hand raised.
And I did motion to table.
Sorry, I was muted. Mayor, my understanding is that because the question's been called, that ends the debate? So council should act on the motion and the second on the table.
Roll call, please.
Repeat the motion so we know what we're voting on.
The motion is to, the motion is to approve the resolution to deny the boulevard parking request, so it would be move to approve 10B.
But we're to deny. To deny.
Oh, I'm so sorry. If we vote yes, we're voting to deny. To vote no is to not vote to deny, what is the result of not voting to deny?
Kat, if you want to go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The resolution, the item on the agenda is to deny the parking request, so if council approves that, they're approving the denial of the request.
And if we do not approve it, what is the result?
If you do not approve it, let's see. If you deny their approval, it doesn't, it doesn't automatically mean that it's going to be approved, so it would be, I mean, essentially a similar thing. It's not, your denial of it doesn't mean that it's necessarily just approved.
I'm still not clear on what the result is, though. I mean, do that, is this still an open, an open request from the business owner? We vote again some other time? I don't understand what happens if we vote no. What is, what the result is that nothing happens? I guess I'm very...
I would defer to Robin, I guess, that, I mean, essentially, they could, like she said, they could still submit paperwork. So if the motion fails, the three, I think it's a three-fourth vote for this item, then the resolution is just dead, and it doesn't do anything, and then they could come back at a future council meeting and make the request again.
Okay, do you want to do a roll call vote? We're doing a roll call vote, Councilmember White. You can ask the question after the roll call. Thank you.
But I can't vote without, so could you just clarify, when you say that, does that mean that they would have to refile the paperwork?
There's no paperwork.
Okay.
It's not an application, it's a very administrative...
Their current request would still be standing.
Yeah, we would just resend all the emails that we've been sending, you know, we've asked for items one through five, you've not provided items one through two, please provide those by this date, and then we'll take it, you know, take it back to council.
Thanks, it's very helpful.
Okay, we are going to do a roll call. There will be no more comments or questions until we get this roll call done. Please do a roll call.
Nisa Meyer?
No.
Mattson?
No.
Borgan?
Yes.
White?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
McDougal?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
It requires six, but because one is missing, does that, so it's four-three?
I think you missed somebody. I missed somebody.
So failed. It failed, Mayor.
Yep. Okay, so that motion did not pass. All right, thank you so much. All right, moving on to, where are we? All right, moving on to, where are we? Well, we do have mayor and council reports, and then we would have new business after that. So mayor and council reports, are there any council members who have reports to make? Councilmember Niesemeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank the Clay County Fair, participants, planners, the board, spends a great deal of time putting this event together. I had the opportunity to volunteer as a member of the Clay County Extension Committee as a judge's assistant for the Clay County Fair last Thursday. It was beautiful weather, and it was an absolutely outstanding weekend event, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And so it takes a great deal of work from extension staff, the board, volunteers, and all of the children who come together with their exhibits of all sorts, from creatures to art creations and all. And so it was an outstanding event, and I appreciate it having such a wonderful impact on all of our Clay County community. I also want to raise up Sarah Opitz, who won the Moorhead Award tonight. She is an outstanding individual to be recognized, but I also want to acknowledge that the Lotus Center and the Rec Center also have a need for some support. And if you were drawn to her as an individual, or the Lotus Center, or the Rec, you can find donation information. You can drop off a check or donate online to help keep this shining star in Moorhead viable and accessible to many individuals. I also had the opportunity to attend the groundbreaking for Matson Memorial Field with many, many individuals. I know the mayor mentioned the future mayor speaking at that event, the youngster of the Ingersoll family. It was really outstanding to see, and I appreciate the donation tonight from some of our financial partners. But there is a great need yet to in, increase funding and make Matson Memorial Field even more awesome for generations to come. So look for donation information on the city of Moorhead to support Matson Memorial Field improvements, which we just broke ground on last week.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Niesemeyer. Other council members, Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just let people know that we're having our next conversations with council members event on July 22nd. This one, we've expanded it. It's being organized by council members Mattson, Moore, myself, and Niesemeyer. And this is one of the fun ones that we get to do outside, so it'll be in the small shelter at Gooseberry Park, starting at 6:00, right next to the playground. We'll have refreshments, and just a, again, a nice time to get a chance to chat with people, get to know you, hear your ideas. And of course, the month after that, we'll have our Night to Unite, so we can visit with people more then. Thank you.
All right, other council members.
All right, seeing none for mayor reports. Since June 23rd, I've participated in 23 meetings and/or events. Assigned boarded meetings are, on June 10th, was the Triple RDC Board Meeting. A lot of discussion was spent on the cost of keeping the downtown Fargo site as a backup dispatch center versus what it would cost to sell that site. More to come on that. The MCC JPA Board Meeting was held, just kind of a normal meeting where we approved land sales. And with the Metro Flood Diversion Authority, we had a, a meeting, not on our normal meeting time, but we were able to resolve non-compliance, a non-compliance contract dispute with our P3 partner. And even though it was a $57 million contract agreement that we reached, we ended up saving about $400 million. So it was a good result to the, the challenges that we've had ongoing with our P3 partner. There's also a new Colonel that is being appointed to oversee the US Army Corps portion of the diversion project, but wanted to send a thanks to Colonel Swenson, who met with myself and other area mayors in regards to the work that we've been doing with him since he was in office. Other notable events that I've attended, was able to participate on a panel presentation at the League of Minnesota Conference, the Modern Mayor, impactful community leadership with several other mayors. That was a very well-attended session. Also wanted to give a shout out to Kelly Kuntz and Mike Reitz, who presented on Trainee, the Civic Pipeline, which was a discussion of our Moorhead Citizens Police Academy, or Citizens Academy, did a session at the LMC Conference, and Derek LaPointe also presented on a panel on redevelopment projects in a city. So there are a lot of folks from the city of Moorhead that were presenting, and I think we were the most well-represented city with panels and, and sessions. Let's see here. Also, July 2nd through the 3rd, there were a lot of individuals in the city of Moorhead in regards to a friendship city signing at MSUM with the city of Zaho in the Kurdistan region of Iraq. Mayor Gundar Sheikhow was here in town, along with several other dignitaries from across the country, across Canada, Germany, London, and obviously, the Kurdistan region. We also did a tree planting in Gooseberry and exchanged flags. And the group also met at the Safe City Night at Hopkins Elementary, where they were able to speak with our public safety personnel and had a lot of questions regards to that. There's also an interview done that I did on their national Kurdish television the next day. And then July 10th, participated in a new group called the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Group. So thank you to Councilmember Niesemeyer for getting the city involved with that. That's an organization to really raise awareness, recognize, celebrate, and meet the needs of military families, such as sending care packages to deployed individuals, but also assisting them with a wide range of services, deployment readiness, family assistance, and resources. And then also was a, it's Disability Pride Month, and several of us were able to meet with local disability advocates and community members, and got to participate in a speed date with your elected officials. So that was Councilmember Niesemeyer and Councilmember Mattson. And that is all I have, so I will turn it over to City Manager Molly for City Manager Reports.
Do you, Mayor, a lot of the items on my list were up, mentioned, but there was one also from the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. Thanks, everybody that was able to join us there. But that is the Green Step City Award, where Moorhead was recognized as a Step Five City, which is the highest designation for, there were a couple items that really stood out, the LED light conversions that is happening on the streetlights, continued increases to our tree inventory, and then kind of the leadership around reductions in greenhouse gases, or work, work with the local utility and others around a regional initiative to do that sort of thing. So just wanted to lift that up a little bit, and frankly, thank everybody here that works together on that, and the team, especially Ethan Johnk, that helps organize and communicate all this stuff.
And I think you were going to mention about Kelly and Caleb receiving an award as well.
Well, they haven't received it yet.
Being nominated?
We'll get there. Coming soon.
I thought I was supposed to talk about it tonight. Never mind. Okay, redact that from the council, please. Never mind. Nothing happening here. Okay, we do not have an executive session, but we do have new business, a hearing related to the Onyx Bar and Grill liquor license violation. And I will turn that over to Lieutenant Detloff.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, we're here for the third violation for Onyx. I'm just going to recap the previous violations, just to bring it to your awareness. On November 30th, 2023, at about 5:30, we did a compliance check there, where we send underage students in with officers. They are using one of our body cameras to record the contact. They were able to, to order two beers. They were open set in front of them before they realized that, born in 2006, would not allow you to be into, into a bar. So there was a violation for the first one. Second violation occurred November 25th, 2024, and this started at 2:50 a.m. It ended up being a bar check. One of our officers noticed several cars in the parking lot. Business appeared to be open as usual. She walked inside. First thing she saw was two people smoking a hookah pipe off to her, be her left, and then she saw a table with approximately eight people sitting around it, consuming out of plastic cups. She started trying to find out who was in charge that night. Nobody was in charge. Eventually, a person did come forward and explained that it was a private event. Officer Hermes explained, you can't have private events after hours at a, at your establishment because of the license. While she was doing that, there was another person, while the person who said he was in charge actually had a warrant for his arrest, so as they were going to go and clear the warrant, he took off running out the back door, and they had to chase him down and capture him. The third violation just happened June 29th at 2:34. They had a large event present. Sergeant Wiedemeyer and Officer Turney were there, dealing with vehicles that were getting towed by neighboring business for parking in their parking lot. And at about 2:50, Sergeant Wiedemeyer saw an individual walk out the front doors with an open beer bottle. As he confronted him, the individual put the beer down. It did contain alcohol in it, and then had a confrontation with him. Later learned that this was someone who worked in the kitchen, but was fired on the spot by the manager there. Mr. Santal was present. They went through at about 3:10, and there were still a number of people sitting around inside, not actively cleaning. So the issue is, after 2:30, the only people who can be in a liquor establishment, a bar, are people who are actively cleaning. You can't be sitting around, visiting, there can be no alcohol, nothing out on, you know, you have to actually be cleaning. There's two set, separate incidents where this was not occurring. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if you were done or not, so. And really, what we are here to do is to either approve or deny the, the violation. Is that correct?
There, there is a suspension that was sent out by the city clerk, where they would be closed for three days, since it's their third violation, and that would take place this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday nights.
Questions from council, Councilmember Borgan, and then Councilmember Niesemeyer.
Just for clarification, because I do have the ordinance in front of me, it's a three-day suspension and a $1,000 administrative fee, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Councilmember Niesemeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was curious about the rules and regulations. So when you receive a license, the details about understanding that those present in a liquor establishment after 2:30 a.m. need to be cleaning or leaving, is that clearly outlined for folks when they apply for and receive the liquor license?
I can take that, yes. So it's, our city code 2313 discusses hours and days of sales. You don't have to have a 2:00 a.m. license, that's an additional license that you can apply for. They had applied for one, and that just opens up the hours to stay when, you know, closing at 1:00 a.m. versus 2:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you for that.
But yes, it is, it is stated in our liquor, specifically in our city code.
Thank you for being very clear and clarifying where those details are provided when licensees apply for their liquor license. Thank you.
Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor. Lieutenant Detloff, could you just walk us through the, the next step? So, you know, if there was, would this a three-day suspension and a fine, and, but then they would have their liquor license afterwards? But let's say, so, am I, first, let me just say, am I correct about that? They would be able to come back and have their liquor license after that three-day suspension?
Correct.
Yeah.
So this would just be a progression. So they have the third violation within 24 months, and if they continue on, there will eventually be a five-day suspension, and then I believe the final one is a revocation completely.
Okay, that's really helpful, because I think, you know, we're looking at, these are some serious charges, but it also doesn't mean we're shutting down a business, but it's a good wake-up call to say, hey, there's some changes that need to happen, and, and if the business owner can work with, if there is any ambiguity, make sure that they are fully, you know, understanding everything that needs to happen, in order to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again, then we can continue to have that business thrive in Moorhead. But, but this would be something that, you know, again, recognizes the gravity of the situation and is really calling for some changes.
And to clarify, this is their second violation, so there was, they did the same thing?
Third.
This is their third violation of their liquor license.
But this behavior occurred the second violation. Were they open after hours?
This is the second time they've been open af, well, they have not had it cleaned out by 2:30 a.m.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Niesemeyer.
Thank you. Lieutenant Detloff, can you explain in addition to what happens next? So you said it was the third violation in 24 months. Will the clock restart after this three days, or will the previous violations still stay on the record? And so if they have another violation, I'm not going to do the month math, but if they happen, if it happens again, I know as a former bartender, there were often kiddos sent into establishments just to make sure that bartenders were following our education that is required in order to serve liquor in our community. But I'm curious if not clearing things out, any sort of license violation, would that clock restart, or would it continue to add from the previous violations?
So once we hit November 30th of 2025, that first violation would drop off, but the clock doesn't restart. You look back 24 months. So as we get past 24 months, once it gets 25 months, then that first violation comes off, the other two would still remain.
Fabulous, thank you very much.
Councilmember Hendrickson.
Not just with this establishment, with any other establishment. If they violated three times, you know, the, you know, the after hours and serving underage, with any bar, do you step up patrols there? Do you check them more often as you go on, since they have violated it?
We do our best with staffing. We are, it is increasing, but we, we still have a challenge at that time of day to have the adequate staffing to check on all these. We do encourage officers to do bar checks, it's just depending on call load.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we have the owners in the audience, I just wondered if we could have an opportunity, if there's something, they had questions or wanted to make any comment.
Good evening, councilmembers. Me, I believe it's, it is a good, a good responsibility that, that I have to run Onyx Bar and Grill. I'm, I'm a little bit nervous, because every time I come in here, I'm trying to do the best that I can for the business to drive in Moorhead. And I, and I believe as the owner of Onyx, I'm working very good with the Moorhead Police Department. I have no problem when they come over there to come check inside, to see what's going on. Like I told Lieutenant Detloff, that I have some of my family members or police officers, I know how it is. You know, like, that, that accident that happened the first time, I wasn't there, but my bar manager was there, so we were guilty, I think that. The second time, when they work in there, it was after two, yeah, it was after 2:00 a.m. It was because, and I told them that, it was because of my brother that come from Haiti that I haven't seen for 10 years, and I didn't, at the time, I did not know. And then I have him at the bar, and then me and some close friends, and I was there, me and some close friend was there, and we were drinking, and we kicked everybody out. You know, it was like my cousin, my, my family member that live here, that, you know, like, that was end about that time. Some were cleaning up, some were drinking a little bit, the second violation. But the third violation, I'm here to contest it, because it's not, you know, it's not accurate, you know, and, and yes, there was an accident that happened, some guy that supposedly worked in the kitchen, I don't even, you know, I don't even know him, he was helping somebody that day, and he have a battle of alcohol- of, um, alcohol in his hand. And some of the guys, they leave the bottle in their car, you know, like, um, they, they go grab it. I don't know, I don't know if he come from the front door with it or not, because I noticed the police officer was in the church parking lot waiting. And I called him, uh, the week prior. I said, you know, we having a big event. Um, if you guys can, um, send a couple squad car by Onyx around 1:45 H or so to kind of control the quad a little bit. And I understand, I talked to the, um, to some of the, uh, police department that they showed on staff, I understand that, but you know, you guys can swing by around, because me, I prefer to have the police there. I even, you know, asked the, um, city of Moorhead if they can send a squad car there, even if Onyx have to pay for it. I would like the police around there, because, you know, people don't act a fool. After they drank, you know how it is, and you know, as a bar, you know, like, after you get few drinking, you, you going outside and you don't want to leave the parking lot. I'm doing the best that I can, putting my security over there. I said, hey, make sure the people leave the parking lot and all of that. And after I have talked to the police officer outside, um, we went back inside, because the, the place is a big place, so we have to clean. It's, we, we have to clean it. Usually, I'm, almost every, every weekend, especially Friday, Saturday, um, like, I'm there like till 4:00 in the morning. Not only I have to clean the inside, but I come outside, clean the church parking lot. And I know you guys seen it, because you guys driving by all the time. You guys see what I'm doing there. You know, I'm, I'm sweeping the church parking lot. I'm sweeping my other neighbors parking lot, okay, because I don't want no problem with them. And, um, and, you know, the Moorhead officer, we used to park in the church parking lot, and you guys know what happened. And it wasn't, you know, it wasn't my fault, and I have, I have, you know, I take responsibility for that, but I have to take care of that. Um, but what happened on the 29th, it was, you know, the guy's, I found out, he's, he's a drunk. I don't know where he come from. He come behind the building with a bottle in his hand. He said he was waiting for a Uber.
Mr. Santil, we're not talking about the one gentleman that you're talking about. We're talking about if you were open beyond 2:30 and allowing people to come in and go
Absolutely not, Mayor.
Into your establishment.
No, absolutely not.
Because that is not in accordance with what law enforcement is reporting.
Okay. Let me, let me answer that. Absolutely not. We were open, but, um, I have about, you know, like 10 to 15 staff that, you know, not all of them work there. Some of them are my family member helping me clean the place. We, I have talked to the police outside and go back inside, clean up the place, and then the police come in, the, the, the police officer was like five or, three or four of them come into the building. They have talked to me, we have talked. And then, um, everybody that was in there was cleaning up, tried to go home. So it wasn't, there was no open bottles. There was nothing like that that was going on, and that's why I'm here. Like, if I, if I did something, I know I did it, I'm ready to take the responsibility. But this time, we was not, um, uh, we was not drinking, and then I was not open after hours. And there, there was only one time that happened.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, uh, Lieutenant Detloff, if you could maybe provide us some insight into what was into, in the police reports. Um, it's my understanding that, uh, the information from law enforcement was in direct dispute to what Mr. Santil is describing.
Correct. And it was captured on, um, body camera, where the individual walking out the front door with the, with a brown beer bottle in his hand, um, at 2:50 AM. So you're also not allowed to, um, take any open containers out of the business. Um, so at 2:50, when he came out with that beer that was still cold, um, that was, that is the third violation. He did not come from around the building, the corner of the building. He came through the front door. And it's captured on body camera.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Councilmember Borgan.
What is the ask here? Is there, can, can you explain that to us, please?
Here, thank you, Councilmember Borgan. Yeah, so essentially, the ask here is, um, for council to either uphold the sanction as provided in the city code, which is the fine and the three-day suspension. Um, or, um, or if, if they don't, like Lieutenant Detloff said, it would just, it would not constitute the third violation.
I motion to uphold the city code.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any, uh, further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So that sanction has been upheld. So thank you, Mr. Detloff, or Lieutenant Detloff, and thank you, Mr. Santil. And with that, it is 9:52 and we are adjourned. Good night, Moorhead.